Alright, we are going to hold an induction ceremony for those Master Tani. And everyone has this one?
No.
Okay. Please distribute.
Yes.
Alright, I will nominate Tozmasa Saito as our official photographer. Okay, fellow Toastmasters, it is now our duty and privilege to induct Toastmaster Tani as new member into the Tokyo ESS Toastmasters Club. This is an important occasion both for this new member, actually he is an experienced member, but new member at the Tokyo ESS Toastmasters Club, and for our club. This individual has come to Toastmasters seeking to improve his communication and leadership skills. And now, we now have an opportunity to help him learn, grow, and achieve. Now, um, hold on, okay. Toastmaster Tani, you are joining a worldwide organization, a branch club of a worldwide organization that has helped more than 4 million people, I think more than about 50 people, including resigned members. Learn to communicate more effectively. As members of the Tokyo ESS Toastmasters Club, you will benefit from a program of sales development. You will become part of an outstanding group of people. By the way, these are outstanding group of people, do you agree? Yes. Great. Who are dedicated to helping one another in a spirit of sharing and enjoyment. Okay, Mr. Vice President Education. Have this new member been given an opportunity to discuss his need and the goals with this club? Has he been told how the Toastmasters Club work and for many benefits he will receive as well as application of membership?
Actually, he knows more than me.
And he has said no, right? Okay, so who have been assigned as mentor for this new member?
I'm the senior.
Alright, why would you ask you now?
Who do you want to... Who... Who do you want to ask to be your mentor?
Alright. Okay, thank you very much. So, alright, uh, next page. Okay, membership in this club and in Toastmasters International is a privilege that carries with many rewards, yet it also places certain obligation upon you. We are a group of people brought together to do things we couldn't accomplish alone. Our collective obligation is to grow and improve ourselves and to share our knowledge and experience with fellow Toastmasters in a spirit of enjoyment. This means you must work diligently toward your own self-development, evaluate other speeches in a spirit of support and sharing, assist the club in reaching its goals, remain positive, and keep a smile on the face. Great. Okay, please face your fellow members and affirm your membership by repeating the following words.
I, Anikeishara, in the presence of my fellow members of the ESS Toastmasters Club, make this fair obligation to attend meetings regularly and prepare fully for each assignment, to apply myself to the program outline in the Toastmasters manuals, to participate actively in club activities, to evaluate others in a positive constructive manner, to build open, friendly relationships with my fellow members, and to bring other new members into the club so that they can also gain the benefits of Toastmasters.
You touch quite hard. I like the way you reading this sentence. Okay, with all club members, please stand up and make it your class place to new member. Okay, three, two, one, start. We, the members of the Tokyo ESS Toastmasters Club, pledge to support you in your process of self-development, to provide you with positive and powerful recommendations, to maintain a friendly, supportive atmosphere, to give you opportunities to collaborate, and make your Toastmasters membership a learning experience. Okay, welcome to our club. Okay, now Toastmaster Tani, a member of our Toastmasters Club, now he is ready to take any table topic question. Okay, now, let's start the fun time. Fun time has to be managed by fun person. Who is the funniest person in our club? Who is no other than Toastmaster Eboshi. Let's welcome to the big.
Okay, hello ladies and gentlemen. Are you excited?
Yes.
That's pretty excellent. So today's regular meeting is mainly handled by me, so yoroshiku onegaite shimasu. Okay, so before starting wonderful time, I would like ask each role table, role table to explain your role. So firstly, Toastmaster Tani, please explain about your role.
Yes, a timer. Yes, good afternoon, friends.
Good afternoon.
As the timer of the day, I'll be noting down all time taken by the speakers who are on the stage and speak. Uh, the minimum time limit for the table topics is 1 minute, maximum is 2 minutes 30 seconds. For the prepared speeches, it is 5 to 7 minutes. At the end of the 2 minutes, I will show the green card. At the end of the system, I will show the amber card. At the end of 7 minutes, I will show the red card. After that 30 seconds, grace time will be provided. After that, the speaker speaks, he will be disqualified for voting. So at the end of the session, I'll be submitting my report. Thank you.
I'm certainly moved by this very smooth explanation of the timer. Okay, so the next role is... Toastmasters Uncle Maurice about grammarian.
Good afternoon, member.
Good afternoon.
The grammarian has 3 roles. First, I will count the words of the day. So please use the words as much as possible. And second is pick up the words or expressions that is good to share for everyone. And the last 3, the main goal is to pick up the wrong expression or phrases and to be corrected at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Boyan!
Boyan.
Boyan. Please, everyone, please remember today for the day is boyan.
Boyan.
Boyan. Okay.
Boyan.
Okay. The last role is an out counter, which is presented by Toastmaster Washizu.
Good morning, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I would like to count unnecessary words or sounds such as "ah," "you," "well," or "you know," or something. And I would like to note of each speaking. After the session, I would like to report each number. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Toastmaster Washizu. Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, are you ready for table topics speeches?
Yes, I can.
Yeah.
Yes, I can. Okay, today's meeting theme is "Yes, I Can" or "Yes, We Can." So please say "uh" or something like that. And the table topics theme is presented by no other than Toastmaster Tani.
Good afternoon once again.
Good afternoon.
So, what is the importance of table topics? You mean, what is the importance of table topics?
Fun.
Fun. To create laughter.
To create laughter.
Mental flexibility.
Better?
Mental flexibility.
Mental, mental flexibility. Other?
Sensually reply.
Instant reply. Variable. So, table topics is nothing but a miniature version of prepared speech. It should also have the opening, body, and conclusion. Right? So if your table topics speech contains this order, it is considered to be a good table topic. Okay? And one more thing is, the importance of table topic, you think on your feet. At the moment, you have to think and you have to speak on the topic. So how it will be useful in other side of your world? Like if you are attending interview, instant reply. Your brain will give you already 2 table topics. So instantly, you can reply. And in the funnier part, whenever you are returning home late, you can easily answer to your spouse's questions. Right? So with that introduction, we will move into the table topics. You know, right, minimum time limit is 1 minute. 1 minute at the green, 1 minute 30 seconds amber, 2 minutes red, and after that 30 seconds, grace time will be provided. Okay? So, with that, my first topic is...
Where?
Is?
Where?
Where? Where?
Thank you. Yes, Toastmaster. Okay.
Thank you.
Under in white.
Okay. I love this. The title?
Under in.
Thank you, table topic master. When I was, I don't know how I was, but I first time saw this coin. And the previous design of coin was something different. And this was precious for a young boy when I was probably 4 years or 5 years old. My usual allowance was just 10 yen. But I remember it was my birthday or when my uncle came from Kyushu because I was living in Hokkaido. And he gave me this shiny medal for the coin. And I was so surprised and I was so happy at this coin. But I didn't know how to use it because I only used 10 yen only. And I didn't know how to use it. I thought I needed approval from my parents, but they were just smiling. So what I did was, I took this one on the desk and I covered this 100 yen with a piece of paper. I used my pencil and scratch. Then I could copy the design of 100 yen. And it was really fun. And then I turned over, turned over, and then this way, I did the same. And, well, I had a copy of 100 yen coin here. And I test it with a 5 yen coin, 10 yen coin, and 1 yen coin. And this way, I was, I forget how to use this coin, but I found a new way of playing with this coin. And that made me feel boyan. This was a new way of playing with this precious coin. So thank you very much, and can I have this one?
Yes. A big round of applause. The next topic goes to Toastmaster Washizu. The topic is "Honesty is the Best Policy." Honesty is the best policy, Toastmaster Washizu.
Yes, honesty is the best policy in our society or in our relationship, actually. Actually, I did some mistake for my work. And I feel it's very shameful. And I very, I very hesitate to report to my boss. And also, I feel I will be, I will be... brave from my boss. So I wanted to cover or hide this mistake. But when I asked my fellow workers about my mistake, and he pointed me out that if you cover that mistake, you can't get confidence or be relied on your referrals or your boss. And also, you can't get feedback from your boss or fellow members. So you should be honest, even though you feel it's shame or it's not good for you. So honesty is very important and very positive for our society. So thank you very much.
So the next topic goes to Toastmaster Kaneiko. Yes. You have to say this character.
So I have to say something?
Yes. Yes.
When I first came to this Tokyo ESS Toastmasters Club about maybe 13 months ago, I was really surprised that the Toastmaster of the day at the time suddenly hit this like this. Until that time, I was always thinking that this kind of action is only seen, is only seen in a trade court or something. So I still remember that I got really nervous because Toastmasters activity is something like really serious kind of. And on that day, I still remember that 2 speakers, and those 2 speakers talked about something serious issues. I, I think, if my memory is right. So the first impression about this Tokyo ESS Toastmasters Club or Toastmasters activity itself was serious. However, after a year I participated this Tokyo ESS Toastmasters Club meetings, I came to understand that my first impression was completely wrong. Personally, I'm really used to this sound, and I've never be surprised with something like that. And now I'm, I'm learning how to make interesting speeches or how to entertain people by speaking in front of people. So this speech, I guess, is very close to my daily life speaking.
If you want to give interesting speeches, buy this. Okay. So the next topic goes to Toastmaster Eboshi. The topic is "Most Embarrassing Situation That You Ever Face." "Most Embarrassing Situation That You Ever Face," Toastmaster Eboshi.
The most embarrassing situation I faced. Actually, I don't want to talk in front of you, but I should talk this because this is the topic. I now live in Kodamajo, where it's near from my office, but I used to work from my home in Kanagawa Prefecture. And as all of you know, I sometimes go a drunken style. I really love to drink alcohol. One day, I had a drink with the president in my office. He kidnapped me. And he took me to some kind of bar near Nihobashi or Inzo or I forgot where I drunk. And he poured a lot of wet alcohol into my glasses. And I drunk, poured, drank, poured, drank. Actually, it was a Shochu or wine or something, a very strong alcohol. And of course, I would become under pressure. I took a train on the Keizan Line. And I have to transfer at this Omotosako Station at the time. But I was sleeping and went to Shibuya Station. And I suddenly feel very bad. I get off from my train. About to go through a gate, but I couldn't. Suddenly, something started to kill me. So that, through my throat and into my mouth, it's up to your imagination. Thank you very much.
Time, time?
Time, 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 time. Yes. 13:37, time, time, time.
Yeah.
Every report time.
Okay. Okay, Toastmaster Asma, 1 minute and 52 seconds. Toastmaster Washizu, 1 minute and 26 seconds. And Toastmaster Kaneiko, 1 minute and 54 seconds. And Toastmaster Eboshi, 1 minute and 55 seconds.
Yeah.
All qualified?
Yeah, I'm qualified for voting, so please choose the best speaker. And how was the session? Did you all enjoy it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Toastmaster Tani. And actually, I was very impressed with the style of our table topics. From experience, we didn't use this gables or coins or something like that. And it was quite interesting and enjoyable, the table topics moment. Thank you very much. Okay, so please move for best table topic speakers. And put your ballot sheet into basket and pass the basket to Toastmaster Saito. Please. Okay, so if you have not voted, please keep voting. And let us move on to the next exciting event. Yay! Next is a prepared speech session. And I would like to call our first speaker of the day. The first speaker is Toastmaster Teruki Shiraiwa. And he is going to engage in the Project Content Communication Manual Number 3, Get to the Point. Order a speech to achieve general and specific purpose. Reinforce purpose with beginning, body, and conclusion. Project sincerity and conviction. Control nervousness. Try to not use nervousness. And he's going to deliver his speech under the title of "That is the Potential You All Have." "That is the Potential You All Have." Please join me welcoming Toastmaster Shiraiwa.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Toastmasters. I'm very happy to stand here as a speaker. The fastest speaker today, so first of all, I'd like to ask you something. Toastmaster Eboshi.
Yes.
What's the most favorite and good act, activity you have?
Mostly?
Yes.
Fun activity? Well, I must say Toastmasters.
Toastmasters. Best ones, I think. Okay, and Toastmaster Asma, what's the best act? That activity, what's the activity best at? Making it here?
It's very old. Remember, your pahama, yes, sir.
And everyone has, everyone has something good at. I'm very, I'm very good at making music and teaching something to anybody. And so, I'm now English teacher in other country. But on the other hand, everyone also has poor at something. Toastmaster Kaneiko, what's the, what do you think you're poor at? Yeah, poor, poor at. You think?
Entertaining at this?
Entertaining at this, yes. Toastmaster Okamoto, what's?
Um, playing baseball.
Playing baseball. You are my friend.
Me too.
That are, thank you very much for answering. Like that, everyone has a good at something and everyone has something poor at. So we tend to focus on, every time we tend to focus and cheer, focus on good at, something good at, and cheer at ourselves. But we also have something poor at. And something poor at will be complex of ourselves. But if you change your mind for your complex, I think it would be a life-changing experience, I think. Can you guess why? So that, I would like to talk about today, meaning and wonderfulness, wonderfulness of having poor at, something poor at, and something complex, inferior complex. When, when I was in high school, I'm very poor at studying and especially dislike English.
Really?
Really, yes. I have no good, I have, I didn't, I didn't achieve, get good result, got a good result of English test. And I don't hesitate to learn and speak English. So, and I just, my, through my high school activity, I just concentrate on playing, 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 and having time of music, lots of music. But hesitate to study, learn. Hesitate to study and learn, especially English is the most hesitant for what. But, so, but one day, I like to, I think, but I like to go to the university. I decided to go to university, but I cannot understand how to study, especially English. English is the most disliked activity and I hesitate it. So that, so I'm very nervous to study. I'm very nerv, I was very nervous to study and I would, I would finish the study. I think, I thought I would finish studying, especially English, as soon as possible. So, but, uh, uh, after that, I, after that, I, I... Hmm, I... I took the entrance in some of the universities, but I couldn't get the results. So I thought, I cannot, I cannot learn, I cannot speak, I cannot learn English. I'm very poor at, I was very poor at English, I thought. But someday, I met a good teacher, so very wonderful teacher, especially good at teaching English. He tells me, told me to, told me... He, uh, tells me, uh, told me to, uh, told me, uh, how wonderful, uh, how wonderful, uh, English was and, uh, English is, and how wonderful, uh, how interesting English is. So, uh, as a result of, uh, met, uh, met him, I ta- I was, uh, I turned my mind, uh, dislike Eng- uh, I dislike English to, I like English and, uh, it's very interesting. So, Some, some, some.
Yeah.
Some, your speech, your speech, some, your speech. Uh, I now, uh, have also, uh, using and studying, I have, uh, some complex to using and studying English be- because I'm not good at, uh, I'm not good at using English. But, uh, studying itself and using itself is interesting, I think. So that, uh, I think it's very, uh, seriously challenging if something you, uh, are really poor at. Maybe you, uh, it's, it will be life-changing, uh, experience. Uh, life-changing experience, I think. I think it has some value. That's all. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Toastmaster Shiraiwa, for sharing your wonderful experience with us. And there is one minute four, so let's stand one minute for writing comments. Okay, okay. And has everybody finished writing comments?
Uh-huh.
Okay. The second speaker. The second speaker is Toastmaster Hiroshi Okamoto. He will, eh, 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 he, his project is Competent Communication Manual Number Three, Get to the Point, same as Toastmaster Shiraiwa. Organize speech to achieve general and specific purpose. Reinforce purpose with beginning, body, and conclusion. Project sincerity and conviction. Control nervousness. Strive not to use notes. And he will deliver the speech under the title of "Everyday struggle, everyday struggle." Toastmaster Okamoto.
Uh, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I'll ask you one question. Um, are there anybody who took TOEFL exam before? Uh, thank you. Uh, what, what did you think about it?
Difficult, yeah.
Um, challenging?
Challenging, I guess sentences were quite active and makes that my brain was hopefully.
Yeah, I want to talk about this today. Uh, nowadays, there is much debate over whether high school students should take TOEFL exam as an entrance exam. In my opinion, uh, studying for TOEFL exam is very beneficial. I'd like to talk about two benefits today. The first benefit is that, um, you can learn, uh, English presentation skills. Obviously, uh, TOEFL is a Toastmaster's best place for you to do English presentation skills. Anyway, uh, TOEFL has four sections, reading, listening, speaking, and writing. Uh, most, uh, TOEFL tests take us in the time where Japanese face difficulties having, uh, good score on speaking section. So I, I will show you, uh, TOEFL test, uh, questions. They are like this. What is the least favorite book? What is the least favorite? You have fifteen seconds to prepare your answer and forty-five seconds to speak your answer. Begin start now. One, two, three. And I was like, what is the least favorite? So the book I dislike. Uh, actually, I like all the books, so I have to come up with the idea about the book I hate. Maybe it's what I'm gonna say about the book. But I have to explain about the details and, uh, it's actually, um, I, I couldn't come up with the idea, so, uh, time has spent. So it's really tricky. But luckily, uh, there are a lot of, uh, good examples of TOEFL speaking section on the internet, so you can practice with them. In fact, uh, most of my vocabulary comes from TOEFL exam. The second benefit is that you can learn, language is just language. I think there are many Japanese here, except some people. So I wanna ask you, Japanese guys, to explain how to learn the difference between ga and wa. You know, Tani-san knows about this. Actually, uh, Toastmaster, I'll explain about it to me clearly. Uh, I learnt, uh, what I learnt from him is that, uh, if I want to say, "Watashi wa Okamoto desu," or "Watashi ga Okamoto desu," important words come, uh, before wa. "Watashi wa..." No, no, ga. "Watashi ga Okamoto desu." Uh, it's, it means "watashi" is more important than "Okamoto." On the other hand, uh, when you think wa, "Watashi wa Okamoto desu." "Okamoto" is more important than "watashi." Okay, that is from Toastmaster, I mean. So now, I'm sure, uh, you all Japanese here can clearly understand how difficult, uh, it is to learn Japanese. It is totally same to learn, uh, English. It's really difficult to learn forty languages. Uh, also, uh, other example is to use action word. In my company, in the past, I often saw Japanese "omouaremasu" on the report. Some, uh, some note, this word often, uh, for instance, "Niriyage teikano genin wa, kogoku hi sakken ni aru to omouaremasu." I always ask him, "You thought this?" And he said, "I did." "Why, why, why did you write 'omouaremasu'?" "You, you thought this, so you should use 'omouimasu' or 'desu.'" "Sakken no genin wa, kogoku, teikano genin wa, kogoku hi sakken ni arimasu." So it's really, uh, I think this is perfectly same as using, uh, English action word. When you try, uh, English language, you cannot use passive word. You have to use action word. So learning, uh, language is just language. In conclusion, studying for TOEFL exam is very beneficial. Uh, before taking TOEFL exam, I took TOEFL exam a couple of times. And it was really fun of me to learn, uh, to study for, study for TOEFL exam. So I called to the, the organization who conduct TOEFL exam to interview. Actually, uh, they interviewed. So my interview is on the organization website. Learning English is the money, but it was challenging for me. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Okamoto. Okay, so one minute for comment, writing comment sheet. And Mr. Joe has finally come.
I'm sorry to late. I'm so, I'm sorry to be late.
Uh, no problem. Because it's fog. And it seems that you have finished your job today?
Yeah, yes.
Oh. Okay. Okay, it's write comment sheet for Toastmaster Okamoto, thirty minutes. Thirty seconds. Okay, has, there is no copy here, okay. Okay, so before asking Toastmaster Saito to deliver the speech, ladies and gentlemen, please don't forget today's word of the day, "Foyan."
Foyan.
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 Okay, let's welcome our third speaker. Third speaker is Toastmaster Takeshi Saito. His project is Competent Communication Manual Number Four, "How to Say It." "How to Say It." Words in sentence structure communicates the ideas clearly, accurately and vividly. Rhetorical devices enhance and emphasize ideas. No jargon or unnecessary words. Correct grammar use. And he will deliver his speech under the title of "Hospitality in Japanese Traditional Culture." "Hospitality in Japanese Traditional Culture." Toastmaster Saito.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, Toastmasters. Eh, in the beginning of this year, during my first trip to overseas, I learned that there are no hospitality in overseas. Then, eh, after going back to Japan, I'm so curious in Japanese hospitality in such as a restaurant or public transportation and any other shops. Why Japanese are so kind? So this is my wonder. Then, this time, I decided to try, eh, one of Japanese traditional hospitality. Then, this time, I chose T ceremony.
Oh, yes.
A picture. Then, uh, on this month, three months, I applied for, uh, T ceremony class in Roppon. Applied for, and one day, eh, prior lesson, I did. And, uh, so I had, in front of the, so, uh, after applying few years later, eh, I arrived, I arrived, uh, this class. I'm really worried because this is my first experience. Eh, but in front of the gate, I'm so astonished because I had to sit down on my body and with spread. And we have to, I also had to, uh, exchange my socks to white ones. Really, uh, astonished for me. Eh, it's like a clingy fabric. And after get entering this class, first, I greet the female master of this class, uh, fifty years old. But see, all, eh, nobody teaches, uh, one hundred students in a month. But most, what, eh, much more surprising for me is that she has nobody, the main job. This, uh, T ceremony is a such job, no main job. Then, uh, see, eh, all, I part in normally was a secretary in another company. And so, eh, I participate in this class with other well-experienced students. I'm so difficult, uh, to do that. After being, I went to main books, I feel so many various kind of T ceremony tools, such as a honeybrush, a paper, or, eh, there are so many curious teachers, such as a cup or a chopsticks, and any other bowl or box, and any other I do not know the name. But anyway, so curious tools are getting ready for. And, uh, so, and, and a very beautiful flower is also a good. And I, actually, I experienced five patterns of T ceremony. So really confused because since before, I left only, uh, twisting that in Shira Kyouko, in Jodokawa. Actually, eh, I've learned over one hundred techniques and course, uh, should be learned in this class. Eh, really confused for me. And, uh, every students are really good, they show elegant. I learned that's not they just, uh, that's not because, it's not because they just put in, put on kimono. Their mind are really sophisticated. Because their action only walk, were only, eh, locating chopsticks or any other tools. Each action is really simple, very good, so elegant, so brilliant. So, uh, it's so astonished for me. And the history of T ceremony goes back to almost one thousand years ago in战国时代, in Japan. Japanese females devote, devote, send ritual, spread this culture all over the world. And in this, in this age, even now, also, such as a toilet dish, have to, uh, go in this T ceremony. Once they want to, eh, enter this, they give to, uh, for and, and look at the kata. Take apart the kata and do for. This is a Japanese balance, so, eh, so intelligent. And the, the, so, so. After finishing all of this, I asked somebody of, uh, three, after finishing this lesson, I, eh, I needed to, so, conclusion because for the first beginning, from the beginning, I, eh, would use this topic for Toastmaster presentations. So, eh, I asked the answer to the master, a female master. But she told, and then, eh, in the end, what is the T ceremony? Eh, she told, no answer, because we are... She told, no answer, because we are still on study. Really, I said, really? I never seen, like, T ceremony is such a deep culture. After saying that, how is change suddenly from the angel to egg? Deep? What? What have you say? Yeah, T ceremony is a so deep culture. So you have never, you have only see in the, only entrance. You haven't see even the entrance. You could say such a, you can say such a things after long, long, long years training. Okay. And so I'm so shocked and I have no idea why have to be spoiled. I just to hide our restaurant. But after that, after we finish all of the lesson, I heard that all of the participants such as hanging rose or flower or any other tools are getting ready for, only for myself. Maybe by taking few weeks, it's good for me. And I think it's the ultimate hospitality. Then in as a conclusion, T ceremony is a good combination of the Japanese traditional technique and with hospitality. Thank you, Toastmasters.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Saito for your speech. So ladies and gentlemen, please write down your comments for Toastmaster Saito's speech on your comment sheet. Um, so Toastmaster Tani, please report five minutes for more.
Yes, uh, many thanks in regards each session. Toastmaster Teriyuki Shiraiwa, eight minutes fifteen seconds.
Eight minutes fifteen, okay.
Toastmaster Hiroshi Okamoto, six minutes seventeen seconds.
Six minutes thirty?
Seventeen seconds.
Seventeen seconds.
Yes. Toastmaster Saito, seven minutes twenty-four seconds.
Seven minutes twenty-four seconds.
Yes.
So, okay, unfortunately, Toastmaster Shiraiwa exceeded seven and half minutes. So please vote for either of Toastmaster Okamoto or Toastmaster Saito. So please write down the best speaker you think on the ballot sheet and put your votes into your basket and add the basket to Toastmaster Saito. Actually, we are now, uh, time is a little bit behind, but I would like to have a short break for five minutes. So please back to your seats on two eighteen, two eighteen, two eighteen. Okay, so let's have a five minutes break.
I'm a Japanese. I want to ask you something. I'm sure you're very excited. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. So. I want to ask you something.
So you're too lunch, oh, yeah.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. Um. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. So. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. And, uh,どうぞ. I want to ask you something. 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 Are you so?
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something.
Oh, okay. I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something.
I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. I want to ask you something. Oh, yeah. You got message? Yes, I said, yes, yes. Right? You didn't, I didn't change the, you were close. Comment stick. You have nothing here. Same also, it's like, right, right, right. She was the one. Onbi-san, I saw. Onbi-san. Onbi-san. What was her name? You were very good. She was so. Comment very good. Yes, I have, I have to, I have to.
Okay, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. Yay. Okay, the matter of today's regular meeting is evaluation session. And I would like to call today's general evaluator, who is a quite outstanding lieutenant governor of marketing of District 76 and the president of this club, with Northern and Northern, Toastmaster Asuma.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ebushi, for your, um.
Social introduction.
It's sad to exaggerate. But anyway, thank you very much. Right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, once again. So I am a general evaluator today's meeting. And my role is basically, number one, um, introduce the value individual evaluator. Okay, number two, evaluate evaluators. And number three, evaluate the entire meeting. Now, so let's begin the evaluation session. The first evaluator is going to evaluate Toastmaster Shiraiwa's speech. And the first evaluator is Toastmaster Sono Komori. Please welcome her to the meeting.
Is it good?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Gaiyuan. Good afternoon. Congratulations on finishing our project number three. Today's, uh, this project purpose is to get to the point, what is it? The speaker is to prepare a speech that has a creative purpose and specific purpose. And I thought he, uh, he, he was succeeded in ensuring that inspiring speech by, uh, by his speech. What was it? Firstly, he has, uh, he has the strong message that was, that is the wonderfulness of something, poor wonderfulness of something poor. We, most of them have something that are poor art and thus we all want to know how we, how can we overcome the something that are poor art. By showing this message, he could succeed in bring everybody into this, his speech. So everybody was concentrate, everybody concentrate on his speech. And also, he has, uh, he has a strong opening by question. By questioning, everybody try to make the answer, try to think about the answer. So it means everybody try to get his speech into your own things. And inspiring speech, what was it? Because he, uh, I think everybody think, think he is very good at speaking or using English, but he said he was not good at, or he hate it. So I thought everybody held some gap between his, uh, his status quo and his class. So it was really good. And if something I should say about his speech, uh, he showed a wonderful, uh, he tried to explain the wonderfulness of something poor art. And maybe if you explain more in detail, how, uh, what point of English you, uh, you are interested in or what point you, uh, what point of English changed your life, like, uh, you like music and you became like in English. So in, uh, the sounds, uh, by the, the pronunciation or something, um, changed your, uh, the, changed what your, way of thinking of English, something. But probably he, he was succeeded in, uh, showing that his point that is the how wonderful to, to get interested in something you are not, uh, you don't like. So he succeeded in this speech. Thank you very much.
Next evaluator is going to evaluate the second speaker, Toastmaster Okamoto's speech. And the second evaluator is Northern and Toastmaster Mori. Welcome our with a big hand.
Hello, hello guests and, uh, hello Toastmasters. Thank you, Toastmaster Okamoto, for your great speech. Uh, from hearing your speech, I want, I come to want to take the TOEFL exam. Yeah, actually, I'm thinking if I take a TOEFL or TOEBO, I, I tried to, uh, I took a TOEFL exam quite couple day, a couple times. But I'm, I was thinking, oh, if I took TOEBO or not, and I decide I will. Uh, but it, it is the most powerful, uh, how to say, message. You change me want to take the TOEFL exam. And you have very great skill in your speech. You are, you have great organization in your speech. You begin with your question, uh, did you take, uh, did you take TOEFL exam? And attract the audience first. The question is great. And the next thing, you went to the content, the body. You, the body is very, very so clear that you said the benefit of the TOEBO is not only the hearing and speaking, but the, uh, read, reading, speaking, living of the full ten topics which have. And language is not language. You said the Japanese, uh, the Japanese example that what, I am Okamoto, watashi ga Okamoto de watashi wa, that difference of wa an ga. Very clearly, so that I, I didn't know. Oh, I didn't know what the ga and what the difference well. But you showed up very well to clear, uh, to make, uh, beyond that. And you have very confident, you have no notes. You have, I, I thought you have book, one book, but you didn't see each of them. Just see the audience and the culture is very, like, uh, make us feel you are confident to deliver the message. If, and if I can say your message is more attractive to the audience, I think that you, you can help the elephant view. You are very good, but show the clear message of each small topic if you are clearing, clearing. But I want to know the most, uh, I want to know the connect to the, your titles, everyday struggle. I don't know what the struggle you feel the most in your topic. And second is that, uh, I would like to know that your feeling and your, uh, your how to feel and how to tackle that difficulty. Which make, uh, know your message more clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Toastmaster Mori. And our third evaluator is going to evaluate Toastmaster Saito's speech. The third evaluator is Toastmaster Hanako. Please welcome her to the meeting.
Okay, good afternoon, again, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
First of all, Toastmaster Saito, congratulations on completing CC manual number four.
Thank you.
And there, now I want to talk about five things, two things, two good things, and three suggestion for improvement. First of all, I like, I really like his organization of his speech. Do you remember how he started, um, how he started talking? He said, he mentioned about his experiences traveled abroad and he said there were no hospitality, which caught our, which caught our mind, which we are all living in Japan and experiencing many hospitalities. And he, then he move on to the, his another kind of experiences of T ceremonies or something. It was really great. I think he, I really liked his way of organizing his speech. And second good point was, he put a picture of T ceremony here. And we could understand the situation that he was in, um, at the time. So it was really great to unders, for audiences to understand. Then I would, I'd like to move on to three suggestion for improvement. First of all, I'd like to mention a vocal variety. He used... He used very, really great vocal variety. For example, the angel change to evil or something. He's... He used really strong voices to expression, express how she was feeling. But sometimes, his voices were a little bit small. Sometimes, I was difficult to catch what you're saying. So it will be great if you produce more louder voices, even if you want to need the strength of your voice. And second, I'd like to mention... I like... I think you should memorize your speech. And it will be better to... Better to produce, product, put back your... What you want to say directly to the audience, not something posing and looking down your scope or something. And lastly, I wonder why you are... Why you are holding a pen? Yes, I don't think it's bad. But I think it's better not to hold a pen when you're making a speech. But overall, I really liked your speech. And I'm going to meet many American students next month. So it was great opportunity to rethink about Japanese culture. Thank you very much.
Okay, there are three evaluators. Next evaluation session. Toastmaster Sonoko Mori, three minutes forty-two seconds. Toastmaster Megumi Mori, three minutes forty-two seconds. Toastmaster Kaneko, two minutes forty-six seconds. Okay, Toast, thank you very much. All right, Toastmaster Sonoko Mori, three minutes and forty-two seconds, forty-five. And the Toastmaster Megumi Mori, three minutes and forty-two seconds. Unfortunately, longer than forty-five times. So unfortunately disqualified, all right? And the Toastmaster Kaneko, two minutes and forty-six seconds. So Toastmaster Sonoko Mori and Toastmaster Kaneko are both qualified. So please cast a ballot for the better evaluator, not the best evaluator. Better evaluator. Okay, I give you one minute. Okay, while waiting, may I have an account transfer for it? Toastmaster Roshi.
Toastmaster Atsuna, one time. Toastmaster Shiraiwa, forty-five times. Toastmaster...
Twenty-five.
Toastmaster Okamoto, nine minutes, nineteen times. Toastmaster Saito, twelve times. Toastmaster Sonoko Mori, twelve times. Toastmaster Megumi Mori, eight times. And I don't count myself. So other Toastmasters is there.
Great, thank you very much. And grammarian, Toastmaster Sonoko Mori.
Yes. Actually, I have the expression that I'd like to share. I have six expressions. First is my usual allowance was ten yen. And the new way of playing a coin, which was set by Toastmaster Azuma. And seven... Third one is close to my daily life. And this is my topic, drunk age time. And it's up to your imagination. That was the topic expression. And about grammar, I find some people use the wrong sense. Like when you talk about the past thing, you should use that past tense. And the other one is the plural and singular. This is the... I thought the wrong sentence was, there was two speakers. But I think there... There are... So there were two speakers. And other is, there is no curiosities. There were no curiosities. And I thought there is no curiosity. Not sure, yeah, that's open.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, here are my evaluations for individual evaluators. The first, Toastmaster Sonoko Mori, to evaluation for Toastmaster Shiraiwa. First of all, I think you did a wonderful job. Because your evaluation was basically based on what you saw, what you heard, and what you felt. So fact basis. And you were told, presented the speech objectives and the theme you received from Toastmaster Shiraiwa's speech. And you gave him the very specific suggestions, how to... How he could improve his speech. And one suggestion for you is that in your speech, you sometimes say, "Everybody failed," or "Everybody could focus." But you are not representing everybody. Evaluation speech is your personal opinion, not everyone's opinion. So try to... Try not to use "everybody" in your evaluation speech. Instead, you say, "I could focus," or "I can learn." Because this evaluation is nothing but personal opinion. Okay, Toastmaster Morin, I think you love your evaluation speech, right? That's why you talk longer, that three minutes thirty seconds. Okay, the most impressive thing in your speech was that you told us that... You told me that... I said us, okay? You told me that, okay? The beginning statement was very good. You said, "I want to take TOEFL exam," right? And this is a clear sign that Toastmaster Okamoto's speech changed something in you. And that worked for you, and this is a great one. And you also presented your evaluation speech based on what you saw and what you felt and what you thought and what you heard. And you presented, repeated that Toastmaster Okamoto had great skills, such as speech organization or asking questions in the beginning of the speech to get the audience attention, which was a great thing. And your suggestion was to his speech title. And maybe he would be able to add his feeling to his speech. I think these are the great things. So what did I want to suggest to you? The time management is one thing. Um, sorry, I forgot. Okay, let's move on to the third evaluation, to the third evaluator. Okay, Toastmaster Kaneko did different things than other two evaluators. He... She first congratulated Toastmaster Saito on completing his speech. And this is a very powerful message to recognize a speaker who completed the evaluation. And also, she presented her speech structure, evaluation speech structure upfront. As soon as she congratulated Toastmaster Saito's speech, she said, "I have two good things and three suggestions." So she clearly showed the speech structure. So Toastmaster Saito has time to get ready, okay? And then you pointed out here two good things, like his personal experiences and visual aid. And the three suggestions, the both mainly vocal variety and the visual aid, memorize the speech and the holding a pen, okay? Generally speaking, okay? Please try to limit the number of suggestions, one, for the speaker working on the CC manual, okay? And add more, you know, good things, as many good things in your speech. Sometimes, the speaker will be discouraged when the number of good things is less than the number of suggestions, okay? And then I noticed that your... Two of your suggestions. Number one, the vocal variety. This is actually not the scope of this speech. But there is a vocal variety, there is a vocal variety project, which will be the project number six. But Toastmaster Saito was working on the project number four, okay? So please focus on what he has to do and what he learned so far. And the holding a pen would be a... And memorizing the speech would be a good suggestion. But if you want to suggest something, okay? Stay focused on the project he or she is working, right? This way, the evaluator, the speaker will be able to focus on what he did good and what he has to improve further, okay? Now, as a general evaluator, I'm going to give the evaluation to the whole meeting from the beginning to the end, okay? Something we want to be in the future meeting. That is my first part of my general evaluation. First of all, the word of the day. She prepared this one very well. So if you have the grammarian in the future, please prepare, pick up the word "home," not "here," okay? And creates this kind of visual aid, okay? With the pronunciation and example. And this is a very, very good way for future grammarian has to repeat, okay? The second thing is the Toastmaster's table topic session. Not only he presented a very interesting and thought-provoking and stimulus question, but in the beginning of his table topic session, he asked us a question. What is a good table topic speech? So we had a common understanding of how we compose a good table topic response, right? So he defined, set the stage for a successful table topic session, and he did. And so this is a very, very good practice we, the future table topic master, must repeat. And something we don't want to repeat in the future meeting, okay? That is time management. Yes, okay, although, okay, we are almost on time. But as president, I must bring myself because the business session, which I am responsible for, exceeded the time limit. And the Toastmaster of the day was supposed to start his educational session at 1:19. However, the educational session started at 1:30, okay? So whenever we have lot of announcements, okay? In the future, president and the... President, vice president of education, and Toastmaster of the day work together previously, and set a reasonable time allocation, so we will not run over time. And we can implement a good time management for future meeting. But all in all, ladies and gentlemen, three fantastic speeches and three evaluations and three... One new word for me and excellent table topic sessions. And I love the way Toastmaster Roshi presented the number of unnecessary words and the grammatical suggestions. So all in all, I really enjoyed today's meeting. So let's repeat what we have to repeat. Let's stop what we shouldn't repeat in the future meeting. So I'd like to give my control back to our Toastmaster of the day, Tanisar Souna.
So they're four conducting award presentation. So I need to know what's... Please wait for a while. Oh, yeah, okay.
I forgot to tell the number of the word of the day today. Toastmaster Ebochi, three times, or I think more. Toastmaster Kiminari Azuma, three... Two times. Thank you very much for your cooperation.
Okay, single and award ends are ready. Okay, awarding time has come. Yay! First of all, Best Table Topics Award. The Best Table Topics Award goes to... Toastmaster Ebochi! Second award. Best Evaluator Award. The Best Evaluator goes to... Toastmaster Kaneko! Congratulations! Ladies and gentlemen, one of the most excited times has come. I would like to announce Best Speaker Award. The Best Speaker goes to... Toastmaster... Okamoto! Okay, thank you for your kind cooperation. And I really enjoyed today's regular meeting. And I would like to back my control to our excellent president, Toastmaster Azuma.
Thank you, excellent vice president of education, Toastmaster Ebochi. Well done, thank you very much, once again. The next thing, we still have time. And I want to hold the buke and britbat session. And this is the first time I've done the buke and britbat, okay? Simply, a short explanation of buke and britbat is, buke is, okay? I give you, let's say, ten seconds, okay? And tell me the person who contribute to the success of this meeting most, okay? From your perspective, okay? And britbat is, okay? Tell somebody who didn't do the job as much as he or she had expected. She failed to meet the requirement or the expectation, okay? Okay, so the buke. Anyone who has... Anyone who want to nominate the buke? Who want to give buke a flower? Okay, for the reason...
Even though he got... Had the reference video, he never looked at the reference video. So that shows the amount of preparation he has put for this speech, for the stream.
Excellent. Okay, any other Toastmasters who want to give buke? Do you agree? Okay, yes, Toastmaster Roshi?
Toastmaster Sonoko Mori, because she brings excellent materials to show the... To appeal, to prepare our roles.
Great, okay? Okay, one more. One last chance, one last chance, one last chance. One last chance. One last chance, be creative. Okay, Toastmaster Morin?
Toastmaster Ebochi, who... Warm up the room. Even we rest, rest members, to warm up the room very well.
Warm up the room?
Yeah.
Okay. I think this is good and because of outside, that's precious. But I know what you mean by warm up the room. Because when the room is very cold, no one, no one wants to, you know, speak out, right? So he warmed up everyone's... So he warmed up everyone's spirit, up the spirit. So, you know, his action contributed to a fun meeting. Thank you very much. So Toastmaster Okamoto prepared very well, and Toastmaster Sonoko Mori prepared very well, and Toastmaster Vice President Hason up the spirit. So these three contributions help a meeting later, in later. So let's repeat. Now, bric-ba. Bric-ba. The Toastmaster who didn't, or he or she was expecting. Don't hesitate. Is it time... Yes, Toastmaster Sonoko?
Uh, it's about myself.
Uh, don't... Don't... This... Don't send the bric-ba to yourself.
Oh, yes. Oh, but let me talk about...
No.
No. Okay, um...
The bric-ba always throw to others.
Okay, so...
It's time to fight.
About minutes speech, so before, about the project three or four, we should not see the note, I think. So it... We... I actually think in the last speech, but if you see that notes, every... There are the four points in the speech, and they... It will distract the... To concentrate the speech from the next time. Only the project number one can see the note, but if I should... If I don't, you'll see the note.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I think you want to say everyone shouldn't read the note while you're speaking, right? Because sometimes speaker, they can look just once and look at everyone and not give any speech, right? So don't read the text while you're speaking. I think this is what you wanted to say, okay? Other bric-ba? No bric-ba, no one bric-ba, okay? Three buke and one bric-ba, okay, we want today. Thank you very much. Okay? Okay, so before closing this meeting, do... Okay, are there silent speakers today? Or guest comment? Mr. Joe.
Uh, everyone, thank you very much to invite me today, and I very enjoyed this meeting. And I'm sorry that I was late. But I'm very regret, because I really want to... Wanted to join for the opening. So today, I... The two presentation and three evaluation. And from the two presentation, I really enjoyed each presentation. And for evaluation, I learned what is evaluation. So what the importance of the evaluation, because... Because, uh, uh, they are... They are point... The point they made are very meaningful and thoughtful. And yeah, I very enjoyed today's meeting, and thank you very much.
Thank you. So you came to this meeting while who was speaking, who was the speaker?
Uh, who was speaker?
Yeah.
Maybe Toastmaster Okamoto.
Okamoto was speaking, so you...
Yeah.
Okay. And you didn't listen to Toastmaster Shiraiwa's speech?
Yes.
Okay, and we still have 7 minutes, and Toastmaster Shiraiwa. Would you like to give your speech? Next time. Okay.
I have one suggestion.
Please.
Yes. And regarding the R counter report, right? Whenever, we are telling the exact count, like 45 times that R and everything, right? So normally in outlook, what we will do is... So the speaker, if he exceeded more than 10, right? We'll simply say he exceeded more than 10.
Okay.
So in the way that the speaker will feel comfortable.
Okay.
See, for example, the table topic is for 2 to 3 minutes. In the 3 minutes, if we say that he has 45 hours, we can count so how the remaining time he may have speak, right? May have spoken. So that is the thing. He exceeded 10, okay, more than 10 hours.
Okay. Thank you very much for your suggestion. I think this is very good practice, because, okay, I think there's no difference 10 and 45. Okay? I think that, you know, if you say R or unnecessary words more than 10, 32 and 45, what's the difference? That's a big number. I think the ultimate goal is 0. So I think this is a good practice, and the speaker will not be discouraged. And also, the R counter don't need to work, don't need to do the additional work. When the time reaches 10, okay, he doesn't need to count. So he can do something else. And I think this is a good practice, okay? So, anything else? And then, Toastmaster Ashizu.
Okay, as I said at the beginning of this regular meeting, the next, uh, next regular meeting will be held on August 11th, August 11th. And please keep in mind that the venue is not this room. The venue is my home. My home. And I will send you details of the next venue via mail list later on. And the second thing I want to confirm is that the participants of next meeting. So I will ask you the video, Toastmaster Ashizu.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, you and me.
You and me.
Yeah, right. Toastmaster Shiraiwa?
Uh, not.
Not, okay. Toastmaster Okamoto?
Uh, I have to speak.
Okay. The book is waiting. Mr. Joe?
I'm a guest.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Toastmaster Kaneko? He cannot, okay? Toastmaster Megumi Mori?
I will let you know later.
Okay. Toastmaster Tani?
Good morning.
Okay. Toastmaster Ashizu?
Good morning.
Okay. Toastmaster Saito?
Yes.
Toastmaster Sonoko? Yes, okay. No problem with capacity. But, okay, well, anyway, uh, I will send you the venue of the next meeting later on. So please don't miss my mail list. That's all for me.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, lastly, Toastmaster Ebochi and Toastmaster, I will be visiting the International Convention, starting from the August 21st. Yeah, and the 24th. And, okay, the good news is that there is a Toastmasters International Book Store will be, uh, will be set up in the venue. So if you want me to buy the manuals or badges or something you want to buy from the Toastmasters store, please let me know. Usually, if you buy something, well, you have to pay a huge shipping cost. That's a headache, right? So even though Toastmaster Mori, Sonoko Mori already asked me to buy a lot of books, right? Advanced manuals. So but, uh, don't worry, feel free to ask me or Toastmaster Ebochi, what do you want to, you know, buy? Such as the advanced Toastmasters manual. You are working, even though you are working on the Comptent Communication Manual, maybe you might want to take a look at the future manuals, like an advanced manuals. Okay? It's okay, you can buy, even though you're working on the Comptent Communication manual. Okay? So, um, don't hesitate, let me know. And we... Okay, Toastmaster Saito has the catalog. So we bring this catalog to the tea... No, not tea ceremony, tea shop.
Tea ceremony.
So let's review and let me know what we want to buy. Okay? Alright, so, so, any more notice or comments? Yes, Toastmaster Kaneko?
Sorry, I have some personal messages to all of you. Um, I'm going to participate in Japan American Student Conference in this August. So I won't be able to attend this meeting during August. So I'm very sorry, because I'm the big leader of this club and not being able to attend meetings. And I really wanted to visit Mr. Ebochi's house, but... I feel really sorry I'm not be able to, and I'm so sorry I'm not be able to attend meetings, so I am officer of this club.
Okay? Thank you. So see you in September, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so having said that, we have fun meeting, and let's enjoy the tea after this meeting. Okay? Now, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.